Check, check. Test, test, can you hear me? Welcome, welcome, how you feeling out there?
Good.
Good, because we feel great, yes, that's right, round of applause. So, we are gathered here today—
Why don't you introduce yourself?
Yes, yes, so my name is Kay Bain. I am the program director for 696 Bill Queensbridge. Yes, give it up, give it up. Yes, I have the privilege and opportunity to work with some incredible, amazing individuals that are changing community norms in Long Island City and Queensbridge. And also, I'm a part of the Crisis Management System of New York, which is changing New York City as we know it. Let's make some noise for the Crisis Management System, ladies and gentlemen, and the incredible work of the 18 sites. So, just recently, we celebrated 365 days of no shootings, no homicides—
That's amazing.
—in Queensbridge, yes. Yes, but we're not the only Cure Violence site that's doing this work, so I want to acknowledge my brothers and sisters and comrades in the struggle from throughout the city. I see Life Camp, I see Bevo, I see Staten Island represented, I see DOH represented, I see all my comrades and colleagues from around the city here today. And we're very excited because we have your mayor, Mayor de Blasio, is here with us, as you see. And there's some new developments and initiatives taking place in the work that we do. So, getting into the proceedings and the procedure today, I want to first acknowledge Jacob A. Reese Neighborhood Settlement for the work they've done in bringing us on board, Mr. Chris Hanway, Executive Director here. It's you.
You say whatever you're going to say, then you pass.
Okay, alright, I'm excited, guys, I'm really excited, because this is about community accountability, this is about people in our neighborhoods standing up and being the leadership that we know we should be, being the examples that we know we should be for these young people, these young people that we call high-risk, that we see too many end up in the prison-industrial complex, we see too many end up in the cemeteries, and we're out here making a difference, we're changing and saving lives. So, with that being said, I want to introduce the mayor of New York City, Mr. Bill de Blasio.
Well done, well done. Thank you. Kay Bain has an audacious vision of what we can do here together. I know so many of you do too, from the Cure Violence Movement, the Crisis Management System. It is audacious to believe we can change things that for decades were stuck, where there was so much violence, so much pain, so many families torn apart. And what all of you who are part of the Crisis Management System have done was break that cycle in a way that was unimaginable. And I want to say to Kay Bain that you have shown such authentic leadership—
Thank you, sir.
—and have made such a difference with all of your colleagues. Let's give this man a good round of applause to thank him. You know, one of the things Kay Bain said was about the reality of the prison system. If we're going to fight the scourge of mass incarceration, this is one of the ways to do it at the front line. The best way to reduce our prison population is to stop violence and stop crime from happening in the first place. That's the most essential thing we can do. And that has many elements, let's be clear. That is about improving our schools, that's about improving affordable housing, that's about providing mental health services to our young people and our families, and all of those are things we are trying to do more and more in this city. But another very elemental part of reducing mass incarceration is stopping crime before it ever happens. Now, that is what so much of our neighborhood policing vision is all about, building a bond and communication between police and community in general. What the Crisis Management System and the Cure Violence Movement are doing is the most foundational, if you think about this, because it's about communicating with people before the point of conflict or even at the point of conflict, and resolving that conflict before it gets out of hand. And I have been a believer in this approach, but the more I'm seeing of it, the more I experience it, the more of a believer I become, because it is the people, the people addressing the problems of the neighborhood directly. We in government have a lot we need to do to support the good people of this city, but the good people of this city are also stepping up to solve the problems at the point of contact. This is very brave work. And I want to say it to you, I want to say it to all your colleagues from all the different organizations, it takes bravery to step into a situation of conflict and diffuse it, takes a tremendous amount of focus and a tremendous amount of patience, but that's what people are doing all over the city all the time. They are choosing to do this work. You weren't drafted into it, no one over there was drafted into it, it is a choice, and it is a noble choice. So, we wanted to gather today, because what's happened here in Queensbridge Houses, you cannot deny, right? This is, this is the largest public housing development in North America, that is a fact. This is the development of 96 buildings and six blocks that was plagued by violence for year after year, decade after decade. But now, because of these good people at the front line, these activists, because of the good work of the men and women of the NYPD, a whole year without a single shooting. And I want that to be the shape of things to come in New York City. No one's saying we're going to reach Nirvana, but there's more we can do, because in terms of the city's support for the Crisis Management System and the working relationship between the Crisis Management System and the NYPD, we've only just gotten started, and we're already seeing such promising impact. So, I wanted you to hear that, this is a type of transformation we have to go through, and it fits perfectly with Commissioner O'Neill's vision of neighborhood policing. And I talked to Kay Bain and his colleagues about the way they are now communicating, coordinating with police on a daily basis, and how everyone is working in common cause, different roles to play, very different roles to play, and a clear understanding of those different roles, but both play a crucial role in keeping the peace, and they are acting as partners, and that is a change, that's a paradigm change in this city, and we believe it's going to have a huge impact. Now, I just want you to know, it's not too dramatic to say, not so many years ago, the sound of gunfire was common in this development. It's been a year of golden silence, not a single person shot. And that is amazing in the context of Queensbridge, and it's directly connected to what all together achieved. And again, tremendous appreciation to the men and women of NYPD, because in the year 2016, for the first time in our recorded history, we had fewer than 1,000 shootings in this city, as a whole. 365 days, fewer than 1,000 shootings. I want to thank the people who brought us to this day, and that means everyone NYPD and everyone who's part of Crisis Management System and Cure Violence Movement, everyone together. I want to thank the members of City Council, you'll hear from them, because they believed that we could go farther, and one of the ways we needed to was to create an office, a mayor's office, to prevent gun violence, and to take all these good strands and amplify them and strengthen them. So, I want to thank Councilmember Lori Combo, Councilmember Jomani Williams, Councilmember Vanessa Gibson, because they had a vision, amplifying this work, and that vision has now come to fruition. We also have to thank the community leaders, there's so many people who for years stood and stood up for Queensbridge Houses through thick and thin, all the people who've worked in anti-gun violence work, which is another big piece of the equation, and also other parts of our city government that have supported this work, particularly Department of Health, I want to thank the Director for the Center for Health Equity at the Department of Health, Dr. Alitha Maybank, thank you. So, this is that moment where we go farther. We have neighborhood policing, we have a police force that has been retrained and will continue to be retrained to work more deeply with community. We have a Crisis Management System and Cure Violence Movement that is growing in strength and reach, and now getting the support it needs from the city government. The pieces are coming together. We need to keep going farther. We announced this week definitively that by the end of 2019, every patrol officer in New York City will be wearing a body camera. That will continue to deepen reform and will give everyone confidence that there's transparency and accountability. That will bring police and community together, and it will be fair to community member and officer alike. This is part of the evolution, part of the transformation, that we all have to go on together. So, we see all these pieces coming together. Now, for the Crisis Management System to work, it means engaging more good people who bring the skill and the fortitude to do this work. It's not easy work. Try stepping in the middle of a conflict where you are unarmed and the people in the conflict are armed. That's not, that's not fun and easy, that takes guts, that takes a belief, a faith, that you really are so devoted to being a peacemaker, you'll take that risk. And I think, I say, God bless anyone who will take that risk to keep the peace. So, between all of our efforts, with the tremendous support of the City Council that's led the way on so much of this, City of New York, per the budget announcement we made recently, will now be investing $16 million a year in the Crisis Management System. And the facts are clear, the Crisis Management System, the Cure Violence Movement, has been working in 17 precincts in recent years. Focus on those 17 precincts, because that's where over 50% of gun violence occurs in this city. In those targeted neighborhoods, over the last three years, as we've applied the strategy more deeply, shootings are down 15% in the course of three years. Now, we're going to have the Office to Prevent Gun Violence that's going to deepen these efforts, deepen the connection to the community, PD, strengthen these organizations. You're going to hear from Eric Cumberbatch in a moment, and I want to thank him, I have to tell you, I've gotten to know Eric, I've seen what he has helped to build, I've seen the way he has the trust and respect of people in the government, in the community simultaneously, and Eric is going to be the new Director of this Office, and he's going to do a hell of a job.
That's right.
Thank you, Eric. I'll introduce you in a moment. Forget that. And finally, I want to say to people of Queensbridge Houses, you have been through a lot, but you stood up, you stood strong. So, what we're doing with the Crisis Management System is one piece of the puzzle, what we're doing with neighborhood policing is another piece of the puzzle, but it's also about making this a safer community in other ways. The lights, when I came on this job, I heard how much the neighborhood residents wanted And I heard from Chief Secreto how different it would be for our police to be able to protect people and to be safe themselves if there were lights. So, we have added lights and other security upgrades to keep everyone safe. And you know what to keep people safe, it also means dealing with the health challenges. So, we have repaired the roofs that used to cause the leaks, that caused the mold, that caused the asthma, and the other respiratory problems. And we want this to be a place of opportunity, so those who have opportunity, you have to be connected to the modern economy, and that's why we brought in Wi-Fi for people in these It's a part of change that really can be felt down to the grassroots and make a change in people's lives they can touch and they can feel. So, thank you to all who are here today, because this is something to be proud of. Now, I want us to keep deepening this success. This is, you know, I have said this recently about some of the larger situations in our country. This is not an end, we're not celebrating a year of success and saying that's an end, this is a beginning of more success. This is a beginning. I want to say a few words in Spanish. Me complacer anunciar hoy la nueva oficina para la prevención de la violencia armada. Esta oficina va a trabajar con las comunidades para combatir la violencia de las armas de fuego y mantener a los newyorkinos seguros. And now, I gave them a, I teased you there with the intro of them, but again, I want to say, I have no doubt, because I've seen Eric Cumberbatch in action, I have no doubt this office is going to start not only immediately, but having an immediate impact, supporting the Crisis Management System and the good work of the NYPD. Let me introduce the new Director of this Office, Eric Cumberbatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all. This is really the culmination of a lot of work that was started before there was this large investment, and people really being invested in their communities from their heart, and really looking to make change. And the work with Councilmember Jomani Williams, Vanessa Gibson, Lori Combo, Jimmy Van Bramer, on just building this into what we have now is amazing. The launch of the Office to Prevent Gun Violence is a true testament to the power of government and community working hand-in-hand to promote safety and synergy from within. The Office will coordinate, amplify, and organize community-based efforts to develop innovative strategies to continue to reduce gun violence across the city. We'll do this by working together with our justice partners, community-based organizations, clergy, residents, and of course, our credible messengers who are in attendance here today. Give them a round of applause. Meeting the complex challenges of gun violence, which are multifaceted and we know go way beyond guns or violence, but really drilling down to root cause issues, and how do we mitigate those levels of distress and disorder in people's lives and community. As always, I'm honored to stand with and for the leaders of the New York City Crisis Management System. Your talent, experience, and professionalism is a major reason why New York City is the safest big city in the United States right now. Give those people a round of applause for the work they do. I also want to congratulate the people here at Queensbridge, the residents from Queensbridge, and especially the Queensbridge Team 696. Accomplishing over 365 days without a shooting is not easy work, and the inroads that these individuals make and the history that they have in Queensbridge is tremendous. And for government and our justice partners and our city agencies to recognize their talent and ability, and recognize that we cannot accomplish anything without investing in community, this is a special day, very special day. I want to recognize from 696, Taylon, please step forward, Taylon. Tiffany, please step forward, Tiffany. Hymo, step forward. Blacko, step forward. Malik, Tekeisha, Vanice, Damon, Kay Bain. Give them a round of applause, these are the people that are keeping Queensbridge
Now, you're all media stars.
They're an amazing group. This Office is really focused on coordinating efforts between all of our justice partners, city agencies, people on the ground, amplifying the work, empowering individuals to make change in their community, and really being smart about how we can drive down violent crime while still promoting fairness and having people feel that they're invested, respected, and part of government. So, thank you all.
Now, before I turn to Chief Secreto, I want to say, there's a gentleman over here with a great shirt on, yes, you, sir. Stand up so people can see your shirt, you're going to be our model today. Stand up, turn around so the media can see that. Blessed are the peacemakers. And he's from the Bronx, I think, okay. So, I mean, I think that is, if you had to boil it all down, blessed are the peacemakers. Those are all the people who have made the noble choice to be part of the Crisis Management System and the Cure Violence Movement, and those are the men and women of the NYPD, and the leader of all our efforts in public housing, and he knows personally from his own life what it means to protect the people who live in our public housing, Chief James
Good morning, am I on, good morning, everyone. And I got to say, I'm proud to be up here, and as a Nick fan, a long-suffering Nick fan, I feel like I'm part of a winning team for once. You know, success has many fathers, and as Chairwoman just said, and mothers as well. I really appreciate, you know, the work that you guys are doing in the community, and I don't care who gets the credit, you know, because I think the Police Department has done some things here, we had a big gang takedown last year, took a couple of bad guys that were creating a lot of the havoc, took them out of here, but if you can create an environment where the violence is non-existent, I could take my cops and move to the next development, I don't have to have them here, so, and I—
You don't mean all of them.
I really love what you're doing, because that's the way it should be. You don't need the police, the police shouldn't be in your community to keep things in order, you should be able to have things in order, and you don't need the police. And I would love to see that day, and at the end of the day, we want the same things for this community that you want, and peace, and I grew up in Albany Houses in Brooklyn, and I loved being in, and I got to tell this story, we were in Albany House the other day, and one of the, the Director of the Community Center across the street told us that he used to be mad at his parents, because they had a private house and they didn't live in the projects, in the developments. And so, he felt that the people that lived in the developments were fortunate, and that's the way it was, and that's the way it should be, and that's the way, and that's the way it should be. So, we're here, we're a partner, we do what we can do, and Eric, I'm so proud of you, and I've been working with you now for a little over two years, you're amazing, and I know you're going to do great things. So, I think I could sleep better at night with Queensbridge, now I got to worry about some of the other developments, but just tremendous things doing here, 365 days, zero shootings, zero homicides. I don't, I don't want to brag about that, because that's the way it should be, that's, you know, but it is an achievement, and I want to thank you guys for what you do.
I want to, as we are sharing credit as we should, let's also share credit with all the good people who work for our Housing Authority, who serve us every day. And one of the people who has been often that voice in my ear telling me we need more lighting and we need recreation programs for our young people, and a lot of other things, and a lot of the good things we've done here at Queensbridge, is the Chair of the Housing Authority, Shola Olattay.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, thank you so much for gathering here today. I want to also offer my thanks and congratulations to the Cure Violence Team, and congratulations to Eric, and I'll take a little bit of credit to say that Eric started at the New York City Housing Authority, so, you know, here we go. I think it's really important, the partners that are represented here, our colleagues in government, as well as the community partners, our resident leader, Ms. April, and my fantastic team here, the men and women of the New York City Housing Authority, once again. This was no accident that we find ourselves here today acknowledging 365 days of no gun violence. There has been a concerted effort and investment by this mayor, by this city, to do what we know works. There was $140 million spent here at Queensbridge alone, everything from new roofs to broadband, to upgraded play spaces, to new doors, to cameras, to lights, to bringing on commercial spaces that were once dark that are now tenanted with your offices and others. So, we know what works, and it requires a holistic approach and partnerships at all levels of government, and I'm so proud to be a part of that, but also to hold it up as an example for the other communities that we're working in. So, thank you, Mayor, thank you, members of the Council, as well as our colleagues in Albany, and certainly our partners here on the front line, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Now, I mentioned Shola whispering in my ear on these good issues. Jimmy Van Bramer has whispered, he has spoken. Sometimes he shouts a little bit, he does, he does the whole range of human communication to focus our city government on the needs of Queensbridge Houses. He's been very adamant, and one of the reasons that we have made all these investments has been his advocacy, and I also know he believes in the grassroots solutions that are being achieved here. So, it's my honor to introduce your Councilmember for Queensbridge Houses, Jimmy Van Bramer.
Stand up, stand up, stand up.
There you go.
Stand up, Queensbridge, stand up.
Thank you very much, and I just wish my mother were here to see that standing ovation. Queensbridge, we're in the house. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I just want to say, I love the people of Queensbridge like nobody else's business, and everybody in Queensbridge knows it. We fight for Queensbridge every day, all the time, and this is a great, great day for the people of Queensbridge. All great things start in the Queensbridge Houses, so I want to say thank you to everyone here, and particularly my colleagues who are to my left and who are going to speak, Councilmember Williams, Councilmember Gibson, Councilmember Combo. The City Council has been at the forefront of this movement. The City Council has really fought incredibly hard for this program so that it could be launched, it could become a success, and others could join in this success. So, I want to salute my colleagues and the City Council, and let my constituents know that as the Majority Leader and as the Member of the Budget Negotiating Team, I fought hard for this program to come to Queensbridge, and to make sure we had this program. And I want to salute so many of the local folks here who have been fighting the good fight for decades, for decades, and Ms. April Simpson Taylor, the leader of our Tenant Association, is amazing woman. And Ms. Marion Jeffries, the head of our NAACP chapter. Mr. Chris Hanway, the Director of this amazing— And there are too many to many, but this, too many to mention by name, but this entire section of the room, and everyone there who doesn't have a press pass, are members of the Queensbridge Senior Center in one way or another. So, I want to thank them, because long before others may have discovered Queensbridge, you were fighting for this community every single day, every single day, so thank you for that. And— for that. And I see, I have to mention Mr. Smith, Mr. John D. Smith there. I'm not going to mention his age, but Mr. Smith has been around a while. He's a veteran of World War II.
Wow.
And-
Definitely been around a while.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
So, I'm doing my math.
And not to be outdone, Mrs. Smith is here as well, right there. So... I think they're married something like 70 years or something. Am I right? One more year. So, let me just say this. Congratulations to Kay and to the entire 696 team for saving lives and for being out there. This is an incredibly important program. I want to thank Shola. We have done great work here. Incredible, but well-deserved resources being directed to Queensbridge and to this community. And I was told just yesterday the work has been finally completed on the bathrooms downstairs at the Queensbridge Senior Center. That may sound like a minor victory, but it took seven years to get that done. And even longer, my seniors know how long we fought. I'm proud to have fought for every bit of that $140 million that has been invested here. And I want to point out, Ms. April Simpson was at PS 111 with me and some others. PS 111 is seeing tremendous gains, tremendous improvement, and a school that they had labeled persistently dangerous is now persistently safe. And our children are valuable and safe. And I also checked with Chris, because we've been fighting for air conditioning in this wonderful facility for decades, decades and decades. And I don't believe it's on because it's a little toasty in here, but Chris said if we needed it, he could turn it on and we would have air conditioning at Jacob Rees for the first time. And let me just say, the work 696 and this program is doing is amazing. And you put that together with the investments in PS 111, making sure that arts programs are all throughout our school and throughout Jacob Rees here, making sure that we've repaired the Queensbridge seawall. We're sat neglected for 30 years. We're fixing Queensbridge Park because everybody in Queensbridge deserves this. This is your tax dollars that got denied you for too long, but it is here now for the people of Queensbridge. And I just want to say, this is a $500,000 grant for Queensbridge. This Cure Violence, I'm proud to have fought for that. We should keep that in the budget and increase it, is what we should do, and make sure that Queensbridge- Has even more. So, six blocks, 96 buildings, and I am the luckiest council member in the entire world, because I get to represent and fight for each and every one of you every single day. Thank you for the honor and privilege, and I will never, ever stop bugging this very tall man to my right about more resources for Queensbridge Houses. Thank you very much.
I believe you. Now, I want to now have you hear from three council members, and they were working in terms of this movement all over the city, and believe that this office was needed to really consolidate the gains and then deepen them. So, I want to thank them for pushing us in the right direction and helping us collaboratively to get to the creation of this office. It took a lot of work, a lot of really focused attention, a lot of complexities, but we got there thanks to these three. So, first, the prime sponsor of the legislation that's related to this, Councilmember Lori Kumbo.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I represent Fort Greene, Clinton Hill, Prospect Heights, Crown Heights, and parts of Bedford-Stuyvesant. And I have to say, I don't get out to Queens often, but this is so exciting to hear about all of the incredible work that's happening here in Queensbridge. As soon as I pulled up, the progress, hearing about the capital improvements, and now as I go back home, I'm feeling some kind of way. But we have some dynamic things going on in the borough of Brooklyn, and I'm so proud of my NYCHA development and residents as well. We're continuing to work hard. But today, as I see all of you, this is so exciting because they say there's nothing more important than an idea whose time has come. This idea is so powerful, and to see all of you here because of an idea that I conceived of with my colleagues in government, it just means the world to me. Because when you're running for office, you want to be able to change the world. You want to be able to change your community. And to see this happening, to see your idea actually become realized is so very powerful. We have done so much to reduce gun violence in the city of New York, but for anyone that has been impacted by an act of gun violence, you know that you don't want to hear at that particular time that gun violence is going down, or that there were only 1,000 shootings. Because for you, that's your loved one. And so, for me, as a council member, the most difficult and challenging part of this job is when you get that phone call that a member of your community has been taken by a senseless act of violence. It takes all of the breath and the inspiration out of your day, out of the life work that you're doing. And we want to make sure, I didn't want to continue to just go to press conferences and vigils and candle-lighting ceremonies and funerals and to visit families who have lost a loved one to gun violence. I didn't just want to come there and say, "Never again." What I wanted to do with my colleagues and in government was to make sure that we can provide solutions, that we can have an office on the ground that I hope will expand to all five boroughs until we eliminate gun violence all across this city and we create a national model for people all over the world. What's so important in the time that we are living in, in the new Trump administration, they want to bring back archaic policies like stop and frisk, bringing in the National Guard and federal agencies into cities like Chicago. And don't think that it's going to stop just there. We have to show here in New York City with our Cure Violence Model Partners, with our city agencies, with community residents, with our TA leaders on the ground, this is how you end gun violence in your city. We don't bring back archaic practices throughout the city of New York. And finally, I just want to say, I thank Mayor de Blasio for hearing of this idea and working to make sure that this became a reality with all of our partners in government. This is so important, because the Police Department is a critical partner, but cannot be the only partner in ending gun violence. This particular office is going to work across agencies so that everything from the Department of Cultural Affairs to the Department of Youth and Community Development, to making sure that we put more summer jobs and summer youth opportunities for our young people. This is going to be a citywide approach that's going to work in support with our Police Department, but we can't forget education and its critical component, and making sure that our young people understand and know that there are other ways that they can challenge their conflicts, that they can resolve conflicts. And so, I want to thank everyone here. I particularly also want to thank the Cure Violence Model operators, because they are on the ground, they are doing the work, they are risking their lives, they are truly what is making a difference in our community. And if all of them that are here, that could just stand for a moment, because we just want to acknowledge all of you for across the five boroughs. Wave your hands in the back! And I'll just close by saying, I know that you don't do this for the love of the money, because I know it's not there the way that it should be. Right? And you're not afraid to say it. But I want to say that our young people and our communities are better because of you. We have made history today. We will continue to be a national model, and we will continue to inspire the next generation of young people in terms of how to create safe communities. Thank you all so much for this opportunity. Thank you for allowing me to be here, and thank you to all my colleagues and Mayor de Blasio. Thank you.
Next, I want you to hear from Vanessa Gibson, and there's been so many things that we have all done together, including the exceptional effort led by the City Council to keep improving the size and capacity of NYPD. And this last month, in January, is the first time that that came to full fruition with 2,000 more officers on patrol than any time we had since 2001. And so, that was, I want to give a lot of credit to the City Council working with us to achieve that, and the Chair of the Public Safety Committee in the City Council, Vanessa Gibson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Queensbridge. Blessed are the peacemakers, for they are cold children of God.
Amen.
It is an honor and a privilege to be here, and I want to thank each and every one of you. I was here just two weeks ago with 696, showing love, because you successfully managed to prevent any incident in your area for 365 days. Thank you. Thank you, 696, Bill Queensbridge. It is a privilege to be here as the council member of District 16 in the borough of the Bronx. I am here to show love on behalf of my great borough and all of my Cure Violence and Violence Interrupters and credible messengers that are in the Bronx, like Bronx Connect, Release the Grip, Good Shepherd, Standing Up to Violence, Save Our Streets South Bronx, and Save Our Streets Morrisania. So, we show love to each and every one of you, because we know that this work and this announcement today of the Office to Prevent Gun Violence is a culmination of hard work, love, and lots of labor. And I am here to say thank you. Thank you to everyone for recognizing that our young people deserve a second chance at a future. Thank you for recognizing that our young people deserve to be success stories and not statistics. Thank you for recognizing that this work is about creating jobs and not more jails. Thank you for recognizing that our young people are destined for great success as long as we give them the access and opportunity, as long as we love our young people and we support them, we mentor them, we guide them, we give them everything that many of us did not have. So, I am so grateful, because this new office is going to integrate holistic approaches that we already doing through the New York City Crisis Management System, to all of the Cure Violence and Anti-Gun Violence workers that do this work every day. No, we don't do it for the paycheck, but we simply do it because we have passion for our people. We do it because we are given a purpose in life. We do it because we need a plan to save our communities. And that is what you have been doing so successfully. So, I thank every stakeholder, whether you have a title in front of your name or not. But we are called to serve in this capacity of our community, and we are making a difference. Many of us are tired of the funerals, of the vigils. Too many families whose lives have been forever changed because they have lost a loved one. The endless cycle of gun violence must end, and it must end now, because we all know that gun violence does not affect just an individual, but it has a rippling effect on a family and the entire community. These are our children, brothers and sisters, and we want to continue to encourage our young people to be the very best, because they are the best. Peace is a lifestyle that can be achieved, and every New Yorker deserves nothing less than that. And so, I thank all of you. I thank our mayor, Bill de Blasio, for his incredible leadership, because he recognizes that we cannot do this work alone. The NYPD are incredible partners in this effort. I want to thank Chief James Socrado and the entire NYPD family. I want to recognize PSA 9 and the 114 precinct. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I want to recognize NYCHA and all of the team assembled for the work you do every day to improve the quality of life of all residents that live in public housing. And I want to thank our chairwoman, Madam Shola Olatuyiye. Thank you for your leadership as well. And finally, as I close, let me just say that this is a movement. We cannot stop. Every incident that happens in this city affects someone personally. We take this work deeply personal. This is not a job for many of us, but it is a calling. It is a calling to serve, regardless of your neighborhood or your zip code. We deserve the absolute best. And through this new office and through the incredible leadership of Eric Cumberbatch, who's done phenomenal work in the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, we are grateful for Elizabeth Glaser and the entire Mock J team. We've been working very, very hard to make sure that this office is an absolute reflection of our everyday commitment. So, once again, thank you to my colleagues who sit with me, who walk with me, who work with me, our Majority Leader, Jimmy Van Bramer, who does incredible work, who never, ever allows us to forget about Queensbridge, Councilmember Lori Kumbo, and Councilmember Jamani Williams, who have been my partners and my foundation in this work. It has been an incredible honor making sure that every neighborhood is touched through this work. So, I also want to just show love to 696, to Save Our Streets, to Save East Harlem, Guns Down Life Up, Life Can't, Man Up, Bronx Connect, True to Life, Rock Safe Streets. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We are going to continue. I also want to thank GMAC, who's here as well. We love you, and we're going to continue to work with you. So, congratulations, because this is your accomplishment. But our work is not done. Continue to be encouraged. Continue to know that you have partners that are here that will work with you, that will walk with you, and that will invest in our future. And I also want to recognize my good friend, State Senator Michael Gianaris, for being here as well. Thank you so much. God bless you all.
All right. We got two more speakers, and I want to preface, as I introduce Jamani Williams, by saying that for all of us, we all have to come to the realization of things through people who help us see. And Jamani, I want to give special thanks and credit to, he held a town hall meeting in his community last year and brought together folks in the Crisis Management System, the Cure Violence Movement, to help me understand what was being done on the ground and why it was working and why it was so necessary. And their personal testimony, and the testimony of mothers who had lost their children, really moved me and helped me see that there was something more we had to do. So, I want to give some credit where credit is due, and thank Councilmember Jamani Williams, please.
I'm quite unusual. I'm trying to keep composure. This is a very-- The premise to me has always been that people who look like me are not genetically predisposed to violence.
Amen.
And it's been incredibly hard to get that simple message across. So, I'm trying to maintain composure while I get through this, so give me a couple of seconds. But to be here is just amazing. It is amazing. I want the media to hear this, because if I say something critical about the mayor, they get blown up. I want to make sure that you hear this. You kept your word, and on this issue, got it right. When I met with the mayor as public advocate, and he was telling me of his future endeavors, gun violence was a major part of what we spoke about. And I think the one thing that needs to be amplified is you and the partnership, we have begun to change the dynamic of what public safety means and who is responsible for it. And that is critical. For too long, the only people we sent to these communities were police officers. That was unfair to the police, and that was unfair to the people they came supposedly to serve. And it's been so hard to change that message, but with my colleagues and-- With my colleagues in government, we are really turning the ship. And I feel like-- I'm speaking so many times for those little kids who look like me, who are being told that something is wrong with them, that they're animals. And I appreciate my colleagues saying, we're telling them they deserve a second chance. I'm saying they deserve the first chance.
Amen.
They never got a first chance to begin. And to sit here with my, K-Bane, my brother from another mother, I mean, if y'all had seen him 20 years ago, you'd scare half the people in this room, man. But just even to go back, the first time I got introduced to Cure Violence was, people that see me trying to get that message across, I got invited to Crown Heights, YSOS, and they told me about Cure Violence, showed me what's going on. I didn't really fully understand, but I filed it. Then about a year later, there were some more shootings, and I got up on the City Council floor and said, if these shootings were happening to a different shade of person, to, in a different community, the whole damn city would pause and put something together to stop it. To the credit of then-Speaker Quinn, there was another shooting, and this task force was put together. I was introduced to people like Erica Ford, reintroduced to people like A.T. Mitchell, who were doing the same Cure Violence I had heard about before and who were on the outside doing the same thing, trying to push this message of what can be done, taking what had happened in Chicago and saying, we want to New Yorkize it. So fast forward even a little bit later, in 2012, I was thankful that I was co-chair with Councilmember Fernando Cabrera, and we printed this report. This is the original report we printed in 2012. And almost everything that was in here, thanks to the partnership, City Council, Mr. McFrida, and this mayor, has come to fruition. All of the things that we talked about. It's simply amazing to be here. We talked about inter-agency communication. I apologize, I'm going to forget to thank a lot of people, I apologize. And we talked about inter-agency communication, we talked about job-based and jobs, we talked about everything, things that are happening here. And Councilman Combo coined it, we need a Mayor's Office of Gun Violence, which is amazing, I'm happy to be working with you on it. But that fundamental message, we have to continue to push forward, that police is not the only answer, they are part of the solution. And these communities, while they do ask for police, they also ask for jobs, housing, and better education, and we have to respond to those asks as well. I couldn't think of anyone better than Eric Cumberbatch to lead this office, so I'm proud of that.
That's right.
I'm going to forget. I got to shout out Timika Mallory, too, because she was on the task force, and she was the co-chair of the Women's March, so she's doing bigger things. I do want to shout out GMAC, Sean Duke McFatter. I saw him out there, I got to make sure I shout out, that's the East Flatbush. Sean Duke lost his brother. Banga, many of me have heard about it in a rap concert. I just want to say I'm so proud of how you handled that, because I don't know if I could have. He could have really easily reverted back to what he knew how to respond, and I think because we had this in place and people around him, they were able to support him, push forward to make sure nothing went awry. I do want to... Because of this climate that we're in, and we have a president telling us what works in New York City, needs to pay the hell attention to what works in New York City. Because this is how you make New York City great, this is how you make America great. Anything else is anathema to what we say we stand for. And it's important, because the abuse is a stop question and frisk. We only said it's not working by your own numbers, it's making things worse, nobody listened. I got to shout out the Daily News, because they're the only one that had an editorial, it said, "We were wrong." And this mayor embraced all of what we said can work, and we now see that it does work, and we have to continue. I just want to say thank you to everybody involved. Thank you for spreading this message so our young people know there is nothing wrong with them, they're not genetically disposed to violence, genetically predisposed and uneducable. It is resources that are needed and holistic approaches treating this like a public health issue. I'm so proud to be here, I believe it's historic, and I think we are shining light across the country where there's a president trying to shine darkness. Thank you.
I just want to thank Jomani, because that was an example of real passion and real heart. Let's thank him again for all he has done. Finally, I want you to hear from a key partner of ours in Albany, and then there's going to be one special acknowledgement that Councilman Van Bramer will make, and then we're going to open up to questions from the media, first on this topic, and then we'll do other topics. But we constantly, to keep making this progress, we have to turn to Albany for help in so many ways, and we need real allies who understand our communities. And Senator Mike Gianaris has been there for the city of New York time and time again. I know he's been there for Queensbridge Houses time and time again. Senator Gianaris.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, most notably for the attention that you have shown Queensbridge, and I'm sure other developments like it all across this city. I've had the good fortune of representing Queensbridge for over six years in the Senate, but I have spent my whole life in these neighborhoods, back to when I was a young lad going to high school down the street at the old LIC, for those of you who are old enough to remember, since moved. But I know that too often Queensbridge has been neglected and not gotten enough attention to its needs, and what we've seen over the last several years is the exact opposite. And I know our NICA Chair, Shola Olatuyi, talked about the holistic approach, and that's really what it is. It's the great services you've provided here at the city level, it's things we can do at the state level, such as the SAFE Act, which keeps guns out of the hands of people who shouldn't have them in the first place, and I was proud to have authored key segments of that legislation. It also includes ending the cycle of the criminal justice system. And I know you are champion of an issue that's near and dear to my heart, reforming the unfair bail system we have in the city and state, and all of those things coming together, and including the great work of NICA, where we talk about the roofs and the health consequences. But one thing we didn't mention is that when the roof repairs were going down, there was scaffolding all over this development, and scaffolding creates darkness, and scaffolding creates opportunities for mischief and for bad things to happen. So all of this comes together to make Queensbridge safer, and the fact that we can celebrate a full year without gun violence is amazing. I do want to acknowledge also someone who's with us, who's been personally affected, who's sitting behind us here, Mr. Eric Marshall, who's the father of Jihad Marshall, who was a victim of gun violence. So I forget who, but someone said, you know, we talk about how great it is that gun violence has been reduced, but there are still people who are suffering because it's happened in the past, and as much as we'd like it to be zero forever, we know it's not going to get there without a lot of hard work, and some of that's being done today. And I thank my colleagues in the council for their great work in making today possible. But Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. While the Senator made the acknowledgement the Councilman was going to make, and that's all good, but Eric, I want to say to you, as a father myself, I just want to say I can only imagine the pain and the loss, but I want to thank you for honoring your child by contributing to the safety of other young people. And that's noble work, and that's a true legacy. Thank you. We're now going to take questions from the media on this topic and related topics around the Cure Violence Movement, Crisis Management System, the new office, and then after that we'll take questions on all other topics. Yes.
You talked about how challenging this work is. I just wondered if perhaps, just talk about what you actually do, how you do this work.
Excellent. Thank you for that question. So, again, we work with an incredible staff of people who are dedicated to change in the community, and as the mayor said, these are people who put their lives on the line in the name of peace. So on a daily basis, our Violence Interrupters are in what's called the hotspots within our catchment area. These are people who stay in the loop and in the know, so that before something occurs, we can get on a preventative side of it. We also have outreach workers who manage a caseload of 10 to 15 young people, who are all high-risk for the most part in Queensbridge. So right now, we have three of those outreach workers, are Tiffany Austin, Manny Campbell, and Mr. Marquise Black, who was just promoted to that position. So that's 30 to 60 young people that they're responsible for. So on a daily basis, they will go to school, they will go to court, they will be at their residences, they will text message, they will speak to them on social media, and they play a very important role in their personal and professional development. We also, on a daily basis, canvass, which is take public education materials and go out into the community as a unit to spread the message of peace and that we're changing the way that we communicate when we have disagreements. That's ongoing on a daily basis. In addition, we have several initiatives that we've released in 696 Build Queensbridge to engage young people. But one of the first things we did when we got here was a needs assessment survey. We talked to about 1,200 people in Queensbridge, and we asked them what their priorities were. We said, how do you see health and wellness? What would you like to see in terms of expanding skill sets and job readiness? What does that mean to you? And many of the people that we encountered in Queensbridge said, wow, we haven't been asked these questions. So some of the programs and initiatives that we start, for example, our self-defense, anti-violence self-defense program, which teaches young people how to avoid situations, how to use their hands, that was because that's what the people said they wanted to see. We're working on a juicing program, because people in the community said, we want to know about this, this is what we're interested in. So that's what we do on a daily basis.
Could you, I just want to amplify the question to K-Bane, because you told me a lot over at the headquarters about what you do when there is a problem, too. That, I think, what I heard was the proactive, but there's a huge role that you play when a problem is brewing.
Right.
And I think you described, for example, when someone's coming back from incarceration, or when there is a conflict brewing between two people. I think it would help everyone to hear the literal way you intervene and how people have to skillfully navigate that.
Absolutely. So, I mean, I can think of several situations, but in general, when we know that there's a problem that's going to occur, when there has been an act of violence, let's say, and there are groups interested in retaliation, then there's a set of steps that we take as a team and as a unit, and that includes using our credible messengers, people who have reputations in the neighborhood, they're known already to intercede and to intervene. So we would take mediation space. We have a mediation room in our office, in our headquarters, that on average in a month, we do between 10 and 15 of these mediations, where we have Party A and Party B sit down and work out differences. Now, Party A many times could be numerous people, so there could be Group A and Group B. And what happens in the mediation room, sometimes we fully resolve a situation, sometimes we come to what is called a truce, or an agreement for the moment, but the process of getting to that can take weeks and months many times, to get two groups to understand that the best way for them to move forward is not to do harm. And that doesn't happen without people who are, again, from the community, in the community, respected in the community, and known in the community. And what the mayor alluded to, that's very important, is that many times you have people who are incarcerated with historical beefs, who've had feuds over, and Queensbridge goes back generations sometimes, a lot of people in the nation know exactly what I'm talking about. We also have tension with other housing developments. So Astoria Ravenswood, there were lives lost between people in Queensbridge and Woodside, and unexpectedly, in a moment's notice, those tensions can stir up and rise up. And that's when you need a team who is ready to move in light speed. So 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM in the morning, I'm calling my staff to a meeting. We worked our eight-hour shift, we went home, said goodnight, and then at 2:00, 2:30, 2:30 in the morning, you have 20 minutes to be at headquarters, because there's something brewing. And that's the type of work we do.
I want to ask one more, and then I'm going to let the media be the media, but I'm going to be the media just one more time. That, I think, to talk about the notion of credible messenger, and let's be real about what gives someone that ability to be credible to others.
Yeah.
Include hard-won experience or painful experience, but how that you literally intervene if you see something brewing, talk about the kind of dialogue it takes to stop that from turning into violence.
Okay, so credible messenger is, as we said, someone who is known, respected, for many times not the right thing, but at this juncture have made a conscious decision to be about peace moving forward. So their reputation precedes them. That's someone who's credible in the neighborhood or the community. Now, I can think of a very specific incident that happened to describe this. We were behind this building in the reeves, and there were a group of young people, Group A and Group B, and there were firearms that were being presented. And I think it was right outside of the Executive Director, Chris Hamway's office, this particular incident, and it was broad daylight. I happened to be in the office, talking to him about some budget items and things that we needed to work on, and one of the staff members in there, I think it was Amanda, said, "Ah, K-Bane, they got guns in there outside." It so happened, I think I had two staff members, who's with me? Taylon and Blacko. So without thinking, without knowing who, what, where, when, why, we rushed out the building, broad daylight, and approached the situation. Immediately, Taylon Murphy's face is noticed and understood that he's a very serious person in this neighborhood, so him approaching the group does something automatically. He approaches Group A, Group B, they quickly decide, Blacko, you're going to go to this side, I'm going to go to this side. Mind you, this is happening broad daylight, but there are firearms present. The conversation then becomes, put that down, let's see what's happening, let's get involved in, what's this about? You know what I'm saying? Where's the disrespect coming from? Why is this happening here? I think then at that point, Blacko said something about, this is how you go to jail immediately, right? As someone who has been formerly incarcerated, I'm letting you know right now that this argument that you're having, this disagreement, is going to end very shortly, and everyone is going to jail. Then Taylon Murphy, who has lost his daughter to gun violence, explained to them and reminded them of who he was and the experience he had in losing his child. And this happened in about 23 seconds, right? Because you have to speak very quickly, and you have to act very quickly, and there's certain things you need to say and you need not to say, right? Because the wrong words escalate a situation and turn it volatile quickly. So when that happens, the next step is, I saw the gentleman step between the two parties with the firearms, and one is instructed to move this way, let's talk. And I think at that point, my Violence Interrupter was saying, yeah, I agree with you, I agree that this is serious, I agree that this is something that has to be handled, but right now is not the time. And I know he was buying time, which is something that we're taught in our Violence Interruption Reduction Training, certain ways to approach violence, this is one of them, to buy time. And then, again, it was reminded, you know, we're in broad daylight, and the police will be here in about 30 seconds, right? So Taylon took Party A into the building, Blacko Local took Party B around the corner. From there, it was far from over and finished, there's a series of steps we do in terms of mediating the conflict and follow-up to make sure that it doesn't just spark back again. But what I'm describing to you is a situation where none of us, my staff or myself, have firearms, we don't have vests, we don't have protection, there's not a whole lot of people that we can call in terms of backup when we're doing this work. It's mostly on knowing how to treat a human being as a human being, and show them that respect, that you overstand and empathize with what they're doing, that you acknowledge that there is an emotion that is present, and then finally that, you know, I've done this the wrong way before, and I've seen this done the wrong way before, so let me provide you some options. Sometimes the young people that we intervene, they are looking for that pass. You can see it in their eyes, they will act violently, but they're looking for someone with some type of credibility to say, there's another way to go about this that doesn't end up with you not seeing your children or your family for the next 10 years. Or I, based on my history in this neighborhood, Hama was someone my OWU, my outreach worker supervisor, excuse me, who can say, I'm giving you a pass. He has that type of reputation and credibility in Queensbridge, that he can say, it's okay right now for you not to retaliate. And those are the methods and ways that we put our lives on the line on a daily basis to keep our community safe.
Amen. Thank you. That was such a power. Thank you. That was awesome.
How do you balance the need to sort of separate people that participate in gun violence, you know, the kind that you spoke about when you created the Fast Track system to prosecute that case? And then also, how much do you work to actually get people to hand over the guns they're carrying to law enforcement? Police often are credited and touted for making gun arrests and taking guns literally off the street. How much work do you do to get people to turn in their guns? And also, just lastly, there's also been a complaint about people who are gunshot victims not participating and cooperating with police investigations, not wanting to snitch and that kind of stuff. How much work goes into sort of changing that culture?
Let me start, and I want, what I'd like to do is start, pass to Eric, and then to K-Bane. The Fast Track, the idea going at perpetrators who have used their guns, because that's the crossing of the line. And I think K-Bane's very powerful, eloquent narrative fits directly to that. There's a point of no return. And once the point of no return is passed, we are going to be very aggressive, NYPD, DAs, et cetera, we're going to be very aggressive about following through on that and making sure there are consequences. But your whole question, Ozzy, actually looks at... But your whole question, Ozzy, actually looks at the whole arc, because better than having to follow through with consequences is that the gun is never fired. And the work that these folks do is unbelievable because of saving lives and stopping the violence before it ever happens. Imagine, again, the bravery of what you just heard, having to stand between two armed groups and talk them down. So that, to me, is sacred, because a life won't be lost as the victim of the violence, and a life won't be lost as the perpetrator goes to jail for much of their life and a family torn apart. And then the next step, to your point, is we want people to change their lives. We want to put down the gun, give back the gun, go to a better life, which is all the things that Kay Bain talked about. We're trying to connect young people to education, to jobs, to things that could give them hope, so a life of violence is no longer the only one they might feel makes sense or that they feel is the only way they can move forward. So I think you're hitting the whole range there, but every gun that is not fired allows that opportunity for redemption. Once it is fired, I think it's very powerful to hear, in those seconds that Kay Bain talked about, if someone understands, if you pull that trigger, you will never go back, you'll never see your child or whatever it is, that is the decisive moment that we're here to stop from occurring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you touched the entire question, but I just want to add that all of our groups that we work with denounce all forms of violence. And in doing that, they have a lot of resources at their facilities to support them. So in terms of talking through with a young person about handing over a weapon or handling a summons or warrant or those things, we have contracted with Legal Aid Society to be at that location and to work with those young people around some of those legal issues that may arise in terms of the gun or other issues that are going on in their life. The key here is to bring young people into services through the credible messengers and really look at where the gaps' needs are and put together an action plan on how we can mitigate levels of distress and disorder in that individual's life.
Go ahead.
So in terms of firearms, and I've been working at Queensbridge a little over a year now, and in that time, I've seen semi-automatic weapons, I've seen automatic weapons, we've seen some grenades.
Wow.
That's a fact. While we've been here in Queensbridge, working on some very young people. But our role is very special and very specific in that we are trying to change the way that young people view and see their options. This is, for us, is about awareness, it's about opening a mind up, it's not necessarily about the gun. I mean, I grew up without a lot. I've seen poverty, I've seen what it looks like firsthand of being low-income environments, and everywhere where there's poverty, you don't see this level of violence that we see in certain communities at this time, right? So I don't equate poverty, I don't even equate the gun as so much of the problem. I'm not saying that I'm pro it, I'm not saying I want to see more, I'm saying that the fact that there is a firearm present, that's a problem. But the real issue is that young people are choosing to use this to communicate or to solve differences. And I think in our work, we focus more on what's happening in the minds of young people. I think we focus more on, you know, what's causing this level of anger or frustration? Why are there not outlets for expression? Why are there not ways for you to connect to your goals and to what it is that you feel like your life journey should take you towards? So that's where the wraparound services that Eric Cumberbatch alluded to, that's where that comes into play, because we provide them with those things. We don't only teach at 696 you about job readiness or employability, we talk about what is an entrepreneur, because many of us from the street have those skill sets. We know how to market, we know how to make sales, we know how to make things move.
That's right.
So we find ways to tap in and to channel young people and the energies that they have into positive and constructive behaviors, and I think that's more of our focus.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please.
I'm sorry, I just want the snitching part, because it comes up a lot, and I just want to make sure we balance it, because, again, oftentimes, you mention these things as a way of making people look weird, but the snitching thing, if we talk about it, we should talk about it there, and there are other cultures that have it, the Blue Wall of Silence is a similar kind of ethos, and so we should address both of those at the same time. But I do want to say that I think the messaging that comes from these folks as well also helped redefine what snitching is. Too often, I think, folks are confused. I mean, if you do a crime with someone, and telling them, that's more on the snitching side, but to tell a grandmother that she should not let people know that she saw someone blow someone's head off is not snitching. And so I think it's important that that message also gets sent out to young people.
Let me just say, before we take more questions, that both Jemani and Lori Kumbo wanted to do an important acknowledgement in the room. Lori, if you would do that, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to acknowledge as well, part of the inspiration behind this, all lives matter in the city of New York, and anyone that lost a loved one as a result of gun violence, there are no people that are higher or more important than others, but some cases bring a higher level of visibility and attention to that. And in my district, during a Juve celebration in our community, that particular evening a year ago, we lost Carrie Gabay. And Carrie Gabay was the legal counsel to our governor, Andrew Cuomo. And because of the high nature of that, it brought to light so many of the challenges that a family faces when going through a loss that we would never know about. And so through that, I had the inspiration in order to even begin to, when I came home from work, to start to write down what this office would be like in terms of the mental health services, in terms of making sure that in our school systems, we understand that our young people need that assistance and support, understanding that in that same particular community, there were over 30 known gangs in that particular area that were functioning. And so this brought to light all of this, but at the same time, it doesn't bring back Mr. Gabay, but it also allows us the opportunity for his life and for those of so many to not go in vain. So I want to acknowledge the Gabay family that's here today, Aaron Gabay, Trinell Gabay. They have experienced tremendous courage, and they have shown that life is so very important. And I just want to let you know a little bit about Carrie Gabay. He was born and raised in New York, he's the son of immigrant families from Jamaica, he grew up in public housing in the Bronx. He got graduate degrees, he received graduate degrees from Harvard University. He later went to Harvard Law School. He held multiple positions under Cuomo, including Assistant Counsel to Governor Cuomo, First Deputy Counsel at Empire State Development Corporation. He is survived by his wife, Trinell, both of his parents, and three siblings. After he was shot, he was in a coma for more than a week before passing away at the age of 43. And so it shows, and it showed Governor Cuomo, that gun violence can touch even you in wherever seats of capacity. This is a national issue that is not just designated to one community or to one people, and it's unfortunate that because of Carrie Gabay's life, so many people in positions of high power began to act because they noticed that this is not just an issue that's just happening in the inner cities, it can happen to anyone. So I thank you for being here, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Okay, we're going to go back to media questions. Grace, you had your hand up before.
I was curious, the scenario that you gave, do you call the police in, in a situation like that, to have them come in and work immediately, or does that make you lose credibility as somebody who has to intervene in situations?
So in that specific instance, we did not call the police in. I can't honestly think of one. Most of the time, the police, they somehow magically know what's going on while it's happening, if not before or immediately after. So what we do is separate and aside from what the police do on a lot of levels. At the same time, I think we talked about a little earlier when we were walking around Brompton with the mayor, when the police come to a situation like that, it becomes their, you know, their situation. So we would stand down and with all due respect, let law enforcement do what they are here to do. In many situations, more recently, we've had relationships build to the point where they, we'd say, "Can we get a few minutes to see what's going on with this disturbance or this, you know, situation?" And law enforcement more frequently says, "Okay, take a few minutes, see if you guys could de-escalate it." And that's something that's happened over time and that we're continuing to work on and grow, but we definitely see law enforcement as our partners and community stakeholders in making this work. But again, we have separate roles.
Go ahead, Eric.
Just want to add that the relationship between NYPD and the organizations in the crisis management system is, on a very high level, from our office, communication is happening and shared across, and that we ensure that the movement we're making on the ground supports the goals and efforts of all, and we all want to see healthy and vibrant communities. And at the end of the day, there's different layers as to how we can make that happen and how we dispatch our different organizations that are contracted with us.
Yeah, let me just jump in on that, too, Grace, for a quick moment. I think when you think about two examples, the one that Kay Bain gave, where you're talking about seconds before the police could get there, you could already have a life lost. I think this is really the sort of the essence of what we're talking about, the ability to stop a crime before it happens, the ability to save a life before it's lost, and the whole cycle of violence, because then when that life is lost, there will be another cycle of retaliation.
Yep.
So, you know, you think about the magnitude of this, the sort of the dominoes falling, it's to disrupt that now and then to continue disrupting it more deeply over time to the point that a lot of young people never go near the choice of having a gun to begin with. That's one piece. The other piece is the scenario with someone returning from incarceration, but with the, in their mind, unresolved issues. The police are not in a position, even though 36,000 strong, they're not in a position to, you know, stand next to that returning individual all day, 24 hours a day, right? So even the best neighborhood policing model means that individual, if they come back with an agenda, is going to be circulating around, and that danger exists. The difference is, with a cure violence model, there's a commitment to understand, that's the pressure point, they see the danger coming, they have to intervene organically and stop that situation from developing, and all that mediation and all that long discussion back and forth to fix it. It's not unlike what happens between nations, if you think about it. Nations have a problem with each other, and sometimes it is about land, and sometimes it is about words, and sometimes it's about history, but nations don't always do a great job of sitting down and working it through until it's resolved. Getting people to say, "Okay, we are coming to a truce," or "There's going to be an apology in lieu of a violent act," or something, or even that that person coming back knows that the community is watching them, respected people in the community are watching them and have an expectation of them. That's the depth of this, and I think it's very high impact. Who else?
Pull up on Ozzy and Grace this question. What happened to the guns in the scenario you described? Did they keep?
Yeah, we didn't take firearms off of those young people, but some of those same young people are youth participants and are employed by our program now and have been with us since days after that event.
And gave up the guns.
And gave up, yeah. I mean, so, again, I think it's more about transforming minds and their awareness is where our focus is. And I want to say, on the mayor's point, you hear us say between 10 and 15, let's say 120 or so mediations over the past year that we've done in our office, and that doesn't sound like a significant number, but when you think about the ripple effect, when you think about how one action leads to several other actions, or how one group involved in violence, how that spreads, then that 10 to 15 mediations that we do in a month is very significant and very important.
And just one other follow-on that. We, no one in this city believes the guns aren't there, out there. Guns are out there, in part because of the broken gun laws in this nation.
That's right.
Guns are out there. Job one is to make sure the gun is never used. Then the higher up the scale is to get that individual, give in their gun, and change their life. Or if a gun is going to be used, then PD is stepping in, and they're going to do everything they know how to do, and by the way, gun arrests and gun seizures are going up simultaneously. These are different elements of how you fight crime. But if anyone, and I don't think anyone in this audience has the illusion, there aren't a huge number of guns out there at any given moment. Our job, if we had a perfect world, it would be first to have never one of them used, and then second, to get every one of them back and get them in. This is a step towards building, you know, that kind of society. It's going to take a long, long time, but this is a step toward it.
So just to be clear, the guns that were used behind your office were eventually turned in days later by the two people who were...
So those firearms are no longer with those young people, correct?
You reiterated a pledge at the top about how you planned to outfit every patrol officer by 2019 with a body camera. In 2013, a judge ordered the city to give body cameras to a much smaller number of officers, about 1,000. You've had three years to try and get those officers outfitted with body cameras. What are you going to do in the next three years to make sure that, you know, 18 times that many officers get them?
We, it was a very conscious pledge, based on a lot of work that's happened in recent months, to resolve outstanding issues. One issue we were concerned about was the litigation by the union. Another issue that we obviously cared about was making it something that would have maximum buy-in from our officers, and I think there's a lot of proof that it's a good thing for officers and community alike. Another issue, of course, the technology, logistics, confidentiality. But as the pilot is growing this year on the 1,000, we feel very confident about the next jump to the 5,000 and then getting all the way to the full implementation by the end of 19. I think it's a situation where some of the caution previously was because the number of unresolved issues were daunting. As we are progressing, we feel resolving more and more of them. So now it's time to make a pledge and let the pledge kind of force us all, in the best sense of the word, to keep to those schedules. We're going to be working with a monitor, but we feel pretty confident right now we can resolve it. Some of the things like confidentiality, those are big issues that we're going to have to keep working through, but it does not stop us from following the numerical path.
What are the emotions expressed from the peacemakers and the team members after they de-escalate a situation? And post-conflict, what are the messages shared with the young people and with the other people that are involved in a so-called situation? What are the messages shared with them?
So this is the most fulfilling work you could possibly do, because on a daily basis, you get to see the incremental growth and change in your community and in individuals that you work with. You get to use some of the mistakes and some of the things you've done so terribly wrong in your life, and then some of the positive choices to influence a young person. So on a daily basis, you get that great feeling of fulfillment. That's what my staff says. At the same time, this is some of the hardest, most challenging, most emotionally draining work that you could do, because you put your heart and soul into your every endeavor when you work with the community. And sometimes you feel like you've taken three steps forward just to fall back two steps on the journey of a young person that you're working with very closely. So it's toiling, it's bittersweet on a lot of levels. I will say this, the mayor has given us such great support, the city council has given us such great support in terms of having those wraparound services. So there are people that the staff themselves get to talk to, to release and to vent and to talk about some of the emotional stresses that come with the job, and that's very helpful. From the young people that we work with, you can see it in their eyes. You can see that they've been looking for mentorship, many of them, because they're leaders. Many of the young people that come our way, that have criminal justice involvement, they're natural leaders. They have certain skills, abilities, and charisma that's undeniable, but now they've found a place where they can harness some of their skills, they've found a place where we pay attention to if you ate breakfast today or not, when are you taking your equivalency test to complete school, or do you need someone to go with you to court to support you? So I see, I'm very happy about where we are. I'm happy, I'm sincerely happy that Eric Cumberbatch has taken this leadership role in this new phase that we're going into in his journey, because he's a selfless brother that we all respect. There are leaders that are placed there for us, and then there are leaders that come from the ground up, right? That lead by example, and again, I can't say it enough, he is a true leader, and so we're all in the cure violence community and crisis management system. A little emotional, because I'm proud of the brother. We're excited and happy to see him in this position and to work with him and continue to work with him.
Beautiful, beautiful. And to add to it, I appreciate your question very much, to add to it, think about it this way, a young person who has taken the wrong path, they feel hopeless, they don't feel they're going to amount to anything, they don't feel very respected by society, Jemani's point, very powerful, if you feel degraded, devalued, it's going to play out in antisocial behavior way too often. And conversely, now, people that that young person can respect are showing a real interest in their life, in their potential, in their future, saying, "Let's unwind this situation. Let's, first of all, let's get this gun out of the equation." But there's a way to do that, that's why I said, legal aid lawyers and a space they can come to, they can feel safe, there's a way to get that gun out of your life. There's a way to resolve the fact you've never There's a way to resolve the fact you never finished school. There's a way to resolve your issues with the criminal justice system. And imagine for a lot of young people who have not felt support before, or felt kind of dead end, that now someone they can respect is saying, no, wait, we're going to turn this around, and we've done it with other people. And we're obviously, you know, the Cure Violence folks have legitimacy, they have a, it's almost a pastoral kind of thing on one level, if you think about it, they're out ministering to a flock. And that's incredibly powerful. So then they turn a life around.
Thank you.
And every time they turn a life around, everyone else is watching, because it's a community. We're all, I always say, we're all from the village. You know, every single one of us comes from a part of the world where there was a village. You know, that's where our ancestors come from. And so you recreate one of the realities of the village, that there is a communal dynamic interest in each member of the village, and that you start to feel a little hope again, a little possibility, and that some people are actually becoming organic leaders. So that powerful story, and I admire your bravery and your colleagues, if you can walk into a situation that may be less than a minute away from turning to violence, and you are unarmed, but you have moral authority, you have moral authority, and you can say to people, let's step back from this, that is an extraordinary opening to then turn one life, which then shows the next person, the next person, the next person. So it is not just a temporary thing, in my opinion. I don't live it the way you do, but my opinion, this is building a different foundation, a different communal foundation for change. It just takes extraordinary strength and bravery to do it, which is why, and one thing my wife, Sherlae, talks about a lot, when folks are out there serving others, whether it be police officer, or Cure Violence activist, or any number of other people, they too need support for the challenges that they go through, the mental health and other issues, because it is searing difficult work. And now we're going to make sure they get that support. Please.
Mr. Mayor, I wrote 18 months ago about one of the first anti-violence efforts in Harlem, and they had some issues where the credible messengers and interrupters had kind of slipped back into that old lifestyle. Back then, you said the city was going to implement some new restrictions and new efforts to make sure that didn't happen. Has anything changed since then? Can you tell me about those new efforts? What are you doing to prevent those people from slipping back?
Sure. So the incident you're referring to from Harlem, number one, the contract was removed from the vendor when we found a number of outstanding issues. To clean that situation, what we did was enhance the current scope of work that all of our organizations adhere to. And that includes background checks, that includes adding drug test screening for the organizations, and ensuring that everyone that's hired at the organization goes through a panel, a hiring panel, which includes members of the community, clergy, and when possible, people from law enforcement that could vouch, so to speak, towards the credibility of the individual. We've also built in support systems for the current workforce to make sure that they themselves have access to mental health counseling, so that they can unpackage a lot of the trauma that they've experienced in their life, and as they continue to do the work, have an outlet to release what they may be picking up from dealing with the young people.
Also, just to mention, because a lot of these groups are nonprofits, and he mentioned everything that was done, but we should also keep in line, there have been nonprofits that are not associated with this that have shut down, like FAGs are huge nonprofits. So things sometimes happen in nonprofits, so we expect that to happen here. And what you do is get the best nonprofits, the best workers that you can, strengthen and make the changes as you move forward.
Excellent. Yes.
I'm old.
Thank you for sharing.
Two, I met a guy who had a change of his boss. He may be aware of it or not, but he was doing a lot of this stuff, and he was having the same results. And my question really is, since this is almost like a triad of truth, why is it not replicable in Chicago or in other communities in New York, or in parts of Philadelphia and Baltimore?
I think it is, is the answer, and I think to some, I mean, I can't speak to the Chicago situation, but I think it is replicable. Yeah, I mean, you can...
Yeah, so I think that is a million dollar question. I think you need to have political will, and you need to put resources. It's not enough to say we should do it, but if you only put your resources when it comes to public safety in one place, then that's what's going to happen. And so what the mayor has done here, along with city council, was not just say this is the way to go, actually put resources and funding and a real structure, and now even push it further with this mayor's office to prevent gun violence. One of the issues that have been troubling is to get people to understand that public safety is more than just the police, and I think that's a key question to what you're asking. So when people think of public safety, they say we need more police. And you have to change that dynamic and make sure the discussion includes all of the things that have to do with the root causes of gun violence, and that's very important. So when you have a president saying they're going to send in the National Guard, as opposed to saying, let's figure out what the root causes are in Chicago, it answers your question. And unfortunately, this really shows how important elections are. Unfortunately, for far too long, people have rewarded elected officials who say cracking down on crime means locking up as many black and brown young people as possible. We flipped that on its head and said cracking down on crime means sending the resources that are needed to those communities that truly is a holistic problem.
That is a question I've seen 22, 23 consecutive years of this downward trend in violence, and to the point where the police are not giving the sole reason for this happening. What is the reason for this?
Well, I want to, look, I don't think anyone has the perfect societal analysis of why everything's happening. I'd say the police are a lot of the reason, when you're talking about a quarter century, but I think community is a lot of the reason too. And it used to be, and I want to say this as a historical point, when things were really tough, when we were having 5,000 shootings and over 2,000 murders a year, a whole lot of people were still doing tenant patrols and neighborhood patrols and doing everything they knew how to work with the police or to create as much peace as they could in their own neighborhood. And that was very tough and dangerous stuff, too. And so there's not, the Cure Violence approach, the crisis management system, is a sort of a building upon that history and taking it in new and, I think, powerful directions. But it's not like there hasn't always been a human impulse to protect their own community and do things beyond that which just the police could do. I think it all added up. I think once, and I give Commissioner Bratton credit, back in 94, realizing that policing was being done the wrong way, and once it was corrected and made strategic, that opened up a world of change. The resources that Mayor Dinkins brought into play, that then Commissioner Bratton was able to work with, I think there's a lot of pieces. But now what I think is, part of what's so powerful, again, I came to this having worked with local police officers a lot when I was a councilman, but I had not spent time with the high command a lot of the time, and I started doing it more and more as mayor and over three years. When I heard Commissioner Bratton and then Commissioner O'Neill talk about how much farther we could go, and they would say it privately, and then they would say it publicly, and I recognize this because they realized that these pieces are starting to build upon themselves. So Vantel, the gang takedowns. When you take down enough hardened, but not the young people we can redeem, but those who have unfortunately made a more consistent choice to be in criminal life, you take them out of circulation, you bring their weapons in, you do that enough times, it changes the dynamic. You move enough young people away from violence through this kind of, these are two powerful trends happening simultaneously. So you're taking away the critical mass of violence. We've added 2,000 officers, there's a lot more presence, we're doing neighborhood policing, so there's a lot more information flow. This is some we're going to be working on every single day, and no one's saying this is easy. But for our police leadership to say we can go farther, because they already see the emerging picture. Now, under Commissioner O'Neill, there has been a growing understanding of neighborhood policing and Cure Violence can walk hand in hand. They're very complementary. So now you have a 360. You know, now you're starting to see the whole playing field, because the police will have a flow of information through neighborhood policing. But folks in Cure Violence have a different form of information they can act on, and that stops a lot at the point of contact. It's going to be a long road, but when you think about it, I think that is the core explanation. Fundamental strategic changes that are now building upon each other. And they're working here in a place that used to be a mess. They're working more and more. I agree with the point, if we can keep proving it year after year, we then can say to this whole country, okay, as a great singer once said, if you can make it here, you can make it anywhere. Like this place has proven it can be done, and that's our mission. Last call on questions on this topic. Go in once, go in twice. All right, we're going to turn, is that this topic or, was that an off sides? That's an off sides. If I had a flag, I would throw it down. I want to thank, if you all, you're welcome to stay, if you want to hear some scintillating off-topic questions. We will now go into off topic. Mara.
Mr. Mayor, it was a cool meeting, a forthcoming meeting between you and the US attorney.
Okay, here's what I want to say. From the very beginning of those investigations, we sent a very simple message, that we were ready to fully cooperate. In fact, we proactively, my attorneys proactively reached out to the US attorney and said, we want to help in any way we can. That dialogue's been going on ever since. So I'm not going to get into the TikTok because I don't know all the TikTok. The bottom line is, there's going to be that cooperation. Again, let me thank everyone, everyone who was here for this wonderful event. Thank you very, very much.
Try to get it in.
Thank you, brother. Thank you very much. Thank you. Well done.
Thank you, man.
You did a great job.
On a lot of levels, I appreciate it.
You did a great job. David.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'm just not going to...
You don't know, people say.
I am not present. It's very simple, guys. I'm not present for all the discussions between lawyers, that's not what I do. And I'm not going to get into the details of things I wasn't a part of. So we've said very clearly, in the coming weeks, we're going to go in and have a discussion. I think it's going to be a good one. I'm looking forward to getting on the table all the issues.
Do you like it or not? A business smart. The Logio.
Louder, pump it up.
And up to off.
What's it say that this law, the federal law, is holding crime? Is there some anxiety or the intention of those offenses?
Yeah, I don't think there should be anxiety. I'll tell you why. For three years now, we've had a very clear city law. And it says there are 170 offenses, and I would urge, anyone who has not read the list of 170 offenses, I would strongly urge you to do so, because I think it's quite clear that it, things that are serious and violent crime. The things that we would consider, and I think there's a handful of areas that we might add, which fit in that category, serious and violent crime. But what we are also clear about, and I've said it publicly, I've said it on national television, there are a whole lot of things we're never going to add, which you could essentially say are quality of life offenses. Low-level, nonviolent, small marijuana possession is a good example. So I would urge people to not get lost in that anxiety. Right now, you can see, it has been the law of this city for years, you can go online, you can see those 170 offenses. That was a matter decided by the council, signed by me, out in the open. Shouldn't do any of those things. You shouldn't break any law. But it's very, very clear what that dividing line is, and that fundamental reality is just not changing. And if we were to add any offenses, that will be a very public process, but again, I think that's going to be a very limited process. Dave.
You find it in your message job, especially this is a campaign year, maybe about this program, the schools, other things, when there's so much focus on these investigations right now.
I would say, Dave, and I say this with no fear of contradiction, I know it's an honest question, the public, who I spend a lot of time with in a lot of ways, and their representatives, who I spend a lot of time with in a lot of ways, are not concerned the way you all are. And I'm not saying that's good or bad, I'm not value judging it, I'm just giving you a statement of fact. The public is concerned about driving down crime, they are concerned about a better relationship between police and community, they're concerned about more and better jobs, they're concerned about better schools, and everything else that has to do with day-to-day life. And there's been a year of you guys covering different investigations, and we have said steadfastly, we did everything the right way, and we held to high ethical standards, and that continues every single day to be our position, and nothing has contradicted that. I think the public's pretty smart in figuring that out, and they want to focus on the things that affect their life. Yes, Hannah.
Two police officers, I just got, I think, pulling themselves, they're shooting at each other. Are you concerned about this?
Yeah, of course. Look, I'm very concerned, because it gets back to what we said earlier. Folks who protect us and serve us go through tons of stress, and some that you can see and some that you can't even see because it's deep inside them, and we have to support them. I know NYPD does a lot to try and provide support for anyone who's facing a mental health challenge or a job-related stress. We're trying to make that available to all New Yorkers through things like 888 NYCWell. And I think, you know, the tragic thing, when you look at those stories, is there was no, there were no signs. I can only imagine how much pain their families are in because there were no warning signs. But we only can, I think the thing we have to focus on is relieving the stress that our first responders go through and so many other people who serve us go through by constantly making available to them, if they need counseling, if they need mental health services, demystifying it, de-stigmatizing it, making it readily available. I think PD has come a long way in doing that, I think we have to keep doing even more.
How do you feel about Governor Paul Rose's pledge to elect President Trump this evening? President Trump supporting him on New York.
I, to be very honest, have not spent a lot of time looking at the specifics of what he's done in terms of the president. Everyone has to choose their own approach. I believe the best way to deal with the president is from a position of strength. I believe millions of Americans have made the same conclusion, and they're acting on that conclusion by standing up. I mean, it's amazing, this is an unprecedented moment in US history the last couple of weeks. The biggest demonstrations in history against an inauguration, almost instantaneous protests against the executive orders, the most I saw this morning on CNN, the most mail and calls and emails into the Congress on some of these confirmations they've ever had. This is the consequence of an election where the person who took office got 3 million votes less than his opponent. And I think that means we should be working from a position of strength, always respectfully, but from a position of strength. So that's my view, but I'm not going to value judge anybody else because I don't watch it closely. Whenever there's a specific thing to coordinate, of course we will coordinate. For example, if there is a real effort to appeal the Affordable Care Act that has huge ramifications for the city and state together. Right now, that has been talk, and as you mentioned, I think you're seeing a lot of Republicans are starting to think twice about what they've gotten themselves into on ACA. If it starts to turn into action, then the city and state are going to have to really work together closely. So this is all going to be moment by moment. Yes, Marcia.
Again, Marcia, I'm going to go into all of this with a simple standard. We have done things the right way. I'm very comfortable with the dialogue I'm going to have, because we did everything the right way, I really am. I'm not going to go into the details of how lawyers prepare. I do want to ask everyone to accurately report the fact that all legal efforts on my behalf are not paid for by the taxpayer, as opposed to other city employees. It's money that will have to be raised. So that's the reality, because I guess you didn't know I'm not a billionaire like my predecessor. That all has to be put together and acted on, that's the reality. But the bottom line is, no public dollars are going into the legal work on my behalf. So I'm going to leave it at that. Any other questions, we'll leave it to the lawyers to answer. Again, I want to respect, excuse me, guys. Guys, these are legal matters. Lawyers will address the legal matters. I'm not a lawyer, so just let them address these issues.
But you, when you were raising this...
Again, we had that question, guys, one at a time, please. When you heard the question was asked previously, I'm not going into the TikTok because I wasn't party to the TikTok. We presented a willingness to cooperate from the beginning, and however the pieces came together, we're going to go in and have that meeting. Yeah.
Yeah, so, I'm trying to follow up on what Mark asked. You're not asking for immunity?
Again, I'm not speaking, I want you to report accurately. I'm not answering the question, because I want to defer to lawyers to answer the question. I just think that's healthier in this case, because these are legal matters.
You just said that you're not spending public dollars on this, right?
On my defense, correct.
The meaning is that you're spending campaign dollars on this, correct?
No, not necessarily.
Your campaign is spent...
Greg, 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 Greg. If you want to, if you want to ask a question, ask a question. Okay.
You are spending campaign money to defend yourself in this matter. What were you doing when you were raising money for the campaign for One New York?
I'm going to make it real simple. If you use campaign... If you use campaign dollars, it's related to campaign matters, that's how it works. If it's not related to campaign matters, then that has to be a different kind of resource.
This is related to campaign matters.
Again, we'll let the lawyers go, chapter and verse with you, it's clear there's different issues out there, I'm just not going to get too deep into it.
One question on this, and then one about homelessness if I could, but can you explain, then, the, I know the city comptroller's office has approved, I think it's $11.6 million in legal spending, is that, you're saying that money is not going to defend you?
Yeah, I think we've said this, and I'm going to turn to my colleague Eric on this one, I think we have said this to you guys in many ways, and if there's some misunderstanding, we should reverse engineer how that is even possible. We've said for a long time, this is not about my defense, it is what you would expect if you were Grace, if you were for something related to your work at New York One, if there's a court action, if there was a judicial process, if you were asked to be interviewed by an investigator, New York One would rightfully provide you with legal support. They wouldn't say, "Bye Grace, good luck." Or if they would, I'd challenge them. Any employer should provide that, because people have a right to representation in this country. So that's what's happening with that money, representing others in government who are being asked to testify in any way. But my defense, as I think, again, we've made clear previously, is being handled in another fashion.
Oh, what's the question?
Go ahead.
I've heard a story on New York One last night, Courtney Gross followed a homeless family trying to get shelter, they had to go to an intake center in the Bronx, and they were sent to Queens, and they went back to the Bronx, and I'm wondering, A, if you saw the story, and B, what is your administration doing to improve the situation? They were traveling for most of the night with children.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and that's a story that we are very concerned, I've not seen it, but I'm saying this is not the first time that's happened, and it's been going on for years. We are going to outline by the end of February, a vision for addressing homelessness with a number of new elements. We're going to continue everything we've been doing, because we think a lot of these pieces are working, and they just have to deepen, but there are new elements we're going to be adding to the equation as well. One of the key points is that for too long, exactly that could happen, as a matter of course, that was, there was no policy against that. You could go to the intake and then be shunted around to different boroughs, more than one over time, with no reference point to where you came from. We believe fundamentally that where you come from matters in terms of getting your life back on track and moving out of shelter. First of all, it matters even while in shelter, if you have kids, we want them as close to the school they come from as possible, instead of a borough or two away. If you have a support network, a house of worship, family, we want you to be as close to that as possible. So we're going to be reorienting, I'll leave the details out for when we make the formal presentation, but we're going to be reorienting the shelter system, it'll take time, to a much more borough-based approach, and then in some ways even farther than that, because it's just been illogical and really unfair to people, that they're taken so far away from the very things that could help them get back on their feet, and especially for kids, so disruptive to children. And so to do this, as you're going to hear, is going to take a lot of big moves, a lot of jumps to get it done, it would take a while, too. But that's the, that's the idea under girding what we're going to be doing, yes.
Two questions on the PBA contract. Can you put in the math, a house saving about $300 per cop, funds, two and a quarter percent raise for the 22,000 members of PBA? Second, does the contract negotiated contain any work rule changes other than the cameras and the enablement of police?
It's a, let me do this, I'll have Dean Foolahan and Bob Lynn, if you haven't had the chapter and verse, I'd like to make sure they do that, or their representatives do that with you, because I'm not able to do all the math, but I'll do the basic theory. We had a couple of moving parts that we had to figure out simultaneously, there's the contract itself, and there was a bunch of other issues. So the goal was to take away a number of uncertainties, come to a common agreement on how we're going to proceed on a number of issues. They included the issue around body cameras, the healthcare savings plan, naloxone, disability, neighborhood policing, so, and body cameras really to us are sort of the best template example. Litigation and disagreement was a real possibility, obviously, the precursors of that were in play. We wanted everyone on the same page, and we wanted to take litigation off the table, and we wanted to lock in a date. So that had tremendous value to New York City. And we had other building blocks, we said we had to stay within the pattern, that there would have to be a combination of, you know, savings and other measures to make sure that was both pattern compliant and that any elements being paid for would ultimately net out. So one of the things they'll go over with you is that, you know, short-term, the city puts some money forward, later makes that money back. And then there was the employee contribution question around disability, where that was, as you know, a thorny issue for a long time, we had to come to some workable compromise, and some of that was the 1% contribution from the officers, and some of that was the savings off the starting salary, which to the best of my knowledge, no other union agreed to, that was their choice. You know, Bob Lynn, who's done an outstanding job, basically says, you know, here's a bunch of stuff we're concerned about, what are you concerned about, what are you willing to put on table, here's what we're willing to put on table. PBA put the starting salary issue on the table. There's been some misunderstanding, as recently as this morning on WNYC, that it was a decrease in starting salary. That was during the Bloomberg years, that was a huge mistake, that is not what this is, is freezing the starting salary, so they're savings to the city, because it doesn't increase the way all their union contracts immediately increase the starting salary, and that savings is plowed into the other stuff. So my answer to you is, and you can imagine, after years of back and forth that weren't getting it right, when I got that call at 2:30 in the morning, someone helped me Monday night going into Tuesday? Yeah, Monday night going into Tuesday. On Monday afternoon in Albany, I was on the phone with Tony Shoros and Bob Lynn, as they said, "Look, we're not sure, but something appears to be moving here on a lot of these issues." And we agreed that, and they said, "We're going to go all night," and it's the kind of classic, everyone locked yourselves in the room and see if you can get it done. I said, "Tony, if you're really getting there, I want you to call me as soon as you are, and we're going to go through everything, and, you know, given the history, you'll forgive me if I thought I might get a good night's sleep." At 2:30 in the morning, the call came, for the next two hours, we went back and forth, you know, really getting all the details clear. And when I saw that all of these things could get addressed simultaneously, and just wrap up a huge body of work that had, you know, been going on for years and years and years, I said, "Not only is that economically in the city's interest, because the math added up, but in turn, from a policy level, and just getting us moving forward, it was a very strong package."
There are or are not work rule changes in the contract?
Again, I'm going to let them, and Bob will be the expert, because there's a lot of pieces to the plan. I think what you have, which I would not say are necessarily the narrow question of work rules, but are in the same vein, the agreement on the cameras without litigation covers some of that same ground. I'm not going to define it, I'm not a labor lawyer, whether you call that a work rule or not, but an agreement to a change in practice is a very big deal. The other pieces, naloxone is in that same category, the agreement to just move forward with a vision of how to address it. Other things like the healthcare savings plan, I wouldn't call a work rule, but I would call it a structural change.
Mr. Mayor, who first run with current Trump administration, a lot of attacks on the media, and in some cases putting out information that is completely inaccurate, one employee, Tom, was, you know, inaccurate, right? So what do you think is the responsibility of the press when it comes to calling out those inaccuracies?
I think it's, you have a historic responsibility at this moment, in my opinion, I say this respectfully. I've often told you guys, I am a literal child of the Watergate years, because I watched, I don't know what kind of 12-year-old watches the entire Watergate hearings, you know, day after day, month after month, but I did. And the press, you know, helped to save the country, and I think there's a very strong parallel. And I, as I said at the rally the other day, that some of the things that the president is saying are Nixonian, they're really, you can hear Richard Nixon's voice in them, you know, it's an eerie parallel, including what he said about protesters today. I mean, his tweet about protesters was, you could have plucked that out in 1972, it was unbelievable. You've been, everyone's been to those crowds, those are not thugs, quote unquote, those are not paid agitators, those are like moms and dads and grandmothers, I mean, come on. So I think the press is now dealing with what the country's dealing with, an unprecedented dynamic where the democratic system gave us a contradiction because of the vote skew, we've just never seen anything like it. And that would be one thing where you'd have every right to extra scrutiny, but you have now this willingness to, you know, say factually inaccurate things constantly and openly and almost brag about it. So, no, I think you guys are, play a crucial, crucial role now in sort of, not just fact-checking, you've always done that, but literally keeping a kind of scorecard you've never had to keep before.
Just to follow up on that, though, when it comes to your own administration, and when there are questions whether, of what the facts are, whether the facts have been obfuscated by the answers that we hear from you, or from the press, what is your relationship with us, and are you concerned at all that when you are in some cases, attracted to the media outlets, the staff will damage our ability to do that work that you have set aside?
No, I don't, I have thought about this, obviously, I don't. First of all, we're having this dialogue, and I think you could say very clearly, and we have to be human and historically correct here, we've been having this dialogue now three years or four, if you include the campaign. It does not resemble the discussion with the president or his team with the media. What I do resembles what most mayors have done, and most elected officials have done, Democrat and Republican alike. We're having a dialogue, we're going to disagree sometimes on issues, you may think something's not factually inaccurate, we do think it's factually inaccurate, you know, the public's going to decide, and we have to prove ourselves right. So I don't think, first of all, I don't have a propensity to call, you know, protesters thugs, and say there was a massacre when there wasn't, and say the crowd size was the biggest in history when it wasn't. I think I can safely say, that's not me. I think anytime you say, you know, "We think your fact is inaccurate," just say it. And I'll say, "Here's why I can prove my fact." And if you prove me wrong on some occasions, then I'll say, "Wow, I had my fact wrong." But generally, I don't think that's what's going on here. I think we believe our facts are accurate, and a lot of times what you guys are concerned about is whether a policy is working, or whether the facts we provide prove our argument, and those are debatable points and fair points. On the outlets question, I'm very comfortable with the position that, and I think it's been under-discussed in this nation and in this city, that there are a whole swath of media outlets that do not take an ideological position, that honestly attempt to report the news, and then there are ideologically driven news outlets. Breitbart, does anyone in this room want to tell me Breitbart is objective, or attempting to be objective? Breitbart would tell you they're not attempting to be objective. So if I say an outlet has a historic ideological agenda, I'm very comfortable with that. I would argue that News Corp, there, I said it for you, that News Corp, Fox, The Post, but especially Fox on a national level, built a lot of the preconditions for the election of Donald Trump, for years, years and years and years. And I think it was systematic, and I think it was ideological. I'll still call on them, but I will be open about that fact that one of these things is not like the other, and I think that's perfectly comfortable to say in a democracy, but you never ban people from press conferences, and obviously, but for a few very specific moments. Plenty of interchange, that's part of the democratic system. But, yeah, I'm sorry, you know, someone may say, "Oh, WNYC, you're liberal," right? I don't think you were created for an ideological purpose, just don't. Last call, Ozzy.
Can you just tell us?
No, I'm not taking it, Greg, because I'm calling on Ozzy, and he's the last one. Go ahead, Ozzy.
I'm going to ask it anyway.
You can ask all you want, Greg. Have a nice day.
Just a few minutes ago, you said that you were sort of open to changing the rules that might get somebody deported, you said, like, "Well, look at this, if there's a process..."
I said, "I'm sort of open," that's your words.
However you phrase it, why are you not able to definitively say, "I'm happy with what we have, we're not going to do this, people..."
It's real simple, because I think some fair comments or concerns have been raised, that there may have been a handful, and I think it really is only a handful of categories that we missed that should have been there. And that has to go through, you know, its own public process. But I think when you think about a process that got us to 170 offenses, it was a very good comprehensive process with the city council. I think it's essentially the right product, and I think it covers a vast majority of serious and violent crimes. There may be a few offenses we should have included, that's a fair question, and we're going to look at it, and we're going to come to a decision. But I know what the other side of the picture is. The other side of the picture is, there are a whole swath of low-level offenses, there's no way, no how we're ever going to include on that list. So I get that you might say, "Well, you know, how are you not perfectly definitive?" I would say to you, we have been real clear about our sense of the broader standards, that's the decisive question, where we think there are serious offenses according to our current law, when it's proven, obviously, we follow through, we cooperate with the federal government, and where someone has not committed one of those offenses, we don't. Real simple. If we add a few offenses, then we act on those few offenses. But I think it's a pretty, a pretty clear differentiation, and the fact that Ozzy, we went and codified it, is another point I would make. The city of New York said, "We're not leaving this to chance, we want to, one, be very clear with all the people where we're going, two, be very clear with anyone who might be in the situation, that here are the specifics." As opposed to either saying, "Anyone could be deported on any time for anything," like if you had a small amount of marijuana on you right now, and you happened to be undocumented, you know, that that could be the basis for tearing your family apart? That shouldn't be a question mark, we're saying, "No, it isn't." That if you did something very serious, the consequences are clear. So we think the rules are really helpful, and unfortunately, the debate is on these two extremes, right? Some people are saying, "Deport everyone." Some people are saying, "Deport everyone who did anything, no matter how minor." Some people are saying, "Deport no one." We think this is actually the third way. Deport those who did serious and violent crime, those who did nothing, and those who did very low-level things, don't tear that family apart, don't take parents away from their children, et cetera. Thank you, everyone.
Can you tell us what that date will be? Since you're going to be doing the people's work on that date, can you tell us what date that will be?